Thank you. Councilor, would you do the invitation please?
Good evening, everyone. Father, we just thank you for another evening to be able to gather together to do the business of the city. We're just so grateful that you kept us another evening and then another week. And Father God, we invite your presence, your wisdom, and your counsel in this meeting. Help us to operate in excellence, peace, and truth. And Father God, we just ask if you continue to bless the city of Glen Arden, the citizens, the employees, and those that did business with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. No motion to adopt the agenda? I'm sorry. Roll call first. Madam Clerk.
Hello, everyone. Councilwoman Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Here.
Councilman Harry.
Here.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Gill.
Here.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
President Curtis.
Here. And Councilman Harrison is under the weather, so he will not be joining today.
Okay, thank you. We have six in attendance today.
Now, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Council President.
Councilor Fareed.
Yes, I do have a concern about the consensus items being on the agenda and not part of the portion of the meeting where we hear from citizens' comments. I think it's a bit ironic that we would go ahead and make a motion to do anything without getting citizens' comments on it when we're actually at a public hearing, which is for the purpose of hearing citizens' comments on items. So I think it would be more fitting for those items to be moved to the public hearing portion and allow citizens to be able to comment on those items before we take any action on them.
Thank you, Councilor Fareed. Any other discussion?
I'm sorry, Council President. So Councilwoman Fareed wants to move the items, the consensus items, into the citizens' comments. Is that what she's requesting?
I believe so. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
But those consensus items, they, they, to me, they're strictly for the council to address, not necessarily citizens.
But this is a public hearing, so if we're not going to be hearing from the public, those items can be addressed at another meeting. We have our work sessions and we have regular meetings. This meeting is for the public to voice their opinions on the legislation that we're going to be passing or any topics that are of unusually high impact to the citizens or any other type of discussions that were required by law to have a public hearing.
I understand that, but what my thought was that a consensus concerning some issues that have come up in the city that the council needs to address after the, the citizens have done commenting on the legislation, certainly the council president can, you know, like I said, these, these items that for consensus is for, is something that the public would not address anyway. But since we're having a meeting, I'm seeing that, you know, we can take a consensus on these issues that have come up. I mean, to wait for, one of them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to wait till the next meeting, which would be the work session, June 6th, but that's my thought. Thank you.
So Council President, I guess my, my question, possibly clarification, would be, what is the difference between us taking a consensus on items versus having a resolution on it? There are resolutions that we put forward that typically wouldn't require citizens' comments, but we still allow for citizens to comment on those. And, you know, examples would be like disposal of, you know, a police vehicle. These are not things that really, I think, the average citizen would be concerned with, but we still put resolutions for, for that. And we still go through the process of getting public commentary on it before we take any action on it. So what is the difference between these items and items like that?
Councilwoman Jones. I'm sorry, is that a question for me or? In general, for the council, Ms. Fareed?
In general, for the council, I mean, particularly the item about us returning to in-person meetings, to me, rises to the level of significance that the citizens would have comment on that since it's the citizens who are wanting to attend the meetings in person.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones.
Well, the, the purpose of the resolu-, any resolution is to let the city, the administration, the council now, and the council, what we've done is what the way I see, the way I've looked at this, is what we do as a council and put it in writing. And then just like now, we go back and look for previous resolutions, such as the resolution on the discretionary fund. There's a resolution in there pertaining to that that was written by the council that is still in, in effect and enforced as to what we do. But if we didn't know that, if the resolution had not been written to tell what the council did, what the decisions of the council were, then we wouldn't have record. And then these resolutions are basically what, the law of what the city has done with, with, with monies or anything that we do that, that has to be, that should be addressed. I mean, if we did something and didn't put it in writing somewhere for somebody to be able to go back and say, oh, this is what was done and this is what I understand, that understood the council wanting them to do, you would, you would have no documentation. And you need documentation of everything that you do in a government.
Right, but minutes are also documentation of what is done. There are many municipalities that do not have as many resolutions as we have to document their actions. They make motions during meetings and they pass those things. And if we're talking about records of how we're spending money or not spending money, I would say that a discussion around whether to grant something gratis for the gold room use, which is an enterprise venture for the city, is something that would fall into that same category. Now, I don't disagree that there are certain things that the council should be able to make decisions on for the city without, excuse me, necessarily going through a full-on process, but I just want to be clear on when we do it and when we don't. And right now, I'm not seeing what criteria allows for these items to be on the agenda and just be consensus items where the citizens don't get to comment as opposed to other types of items that the citizens wouldn't typically comment on either. They go through the resolution and public hearing and voting process.
Well, with the gratis issue, it's already written in the resolution, R. 120, 2012, whereas we give former council members gratis to use the gold room for repass. The, I think it was some question concerning some funds that the, gold room person wanted to get clarity on, and that, that's the reason why this is on the, I'm thinking this is the consent, this is what the issue of consensus is. Am I mistaken, Council President?
Oh, sorry. That, and the, in the rules, even though it clearly states what can be classified as gratis, the rules also say that the council still must make a, basically make a decision on it, even though it's outlined, which is why the gold room staff, Ms. Robinson came to the council so she would not be in violation of the rules, which says that even though these criterias of gratis are clearly stated, it also says that it has to be voted on by the council or agreed upon by the council. So in order to be in step with the rules and regulations of the gold room, this is why Ms. Robinson brought it forward for the council to make a decision. Yay or nay? With that.
Mr. President, I do have one, I do want to make one comment on this before we do vote.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I mean, what a point of fact is that Councilwoman Fareed is absolutely right. If it's on the agenda for a public hearing, it is, it is open to be commented on. I mean, and that's just the nature of a public hearing. If you put it on the agenda, then it's, you know, open to be commented on because you're telling people that a public hearing is a hearing for them to be able to speak out on whatever is, whatever's on that agenda, so. I'm just saying. All right, thanks.
All right, thank you. And forgive me, everyone, I have a little bit of the weather too, so forgive me for coffee in this meeting. Councilwoman Fareed, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gill.
Okay, and apologies in advance for the background noise. I wanted to just ask a quick question. Can consensus only be taken at hearings or meetings from the council? Can it only be done at, you know, meetings? Or can it be done, you know, when we, you know, via email? Since we do have an open meetings act where our records can be made public, can we take consensus there?
I would, I honestly would like to, to see what, as we move forward with some of the resolution have like a resolution to have a lawyer help out with the building of our, like, charter and see if we're doing things in or out of order. I'd like to get that opinion from her. Because currently, in my opinion, I would think that it should be public if we're going to do a consensus. But I, I also understand that it doesn't necessarily raise to the level of, I would like to get some clarification and then, you know, proceeded with that with the best practice.
Okay, yes, and the reason, you know, obviously there's a reason why I ask this because there are times that we, as council, we do communicate together offline, but if any citizen can get access to those, that's fine as well. But for me, my main concern, and it's already been raised, is if this is a public hearing, my understanding of a public hearing is for citizens to comment on legislation or certain, or special topics that reach, that, sorry, that reach a higher level. And so for me, I'm just trying to understand how these two items were deemed as high level. And if it's not pending legislation, then why put it on here when it was clearly made, to me at least, that pending, I'm sorry, that legislation that has been proposed is what citizens are supposed to be commenting on for the public hearing. And that's its sole purpose, that's its purpose. So I'm trying to see how come we're deviating from that.
Okay, so these two items were added on. One of most important would, would be the consensus for, for gratis for Ms., for Councilwoman Barbara Armstrong. Now, I agree that it shouldn't even be on here because we should have, it's, it's clearly stated in the rules and regulations, so we should not have to vote on it still. So I'm in agreement with that. But, you know, we're here because there's no other avenue by which we can do it yet and willing to work with and, and operate on the best practices with advice given by, by council. But that, that is the purpose of this, at, at the very least, Ms. Barbara Armstrong's being on here because Ms. Robinson wants to proceed with the contract as soon as possible because the repass is, I believe, next week, I think. And, but I, I'm also in agreement that we can move this to public comments. So I don't, I'm not opposed to having public comments on these two either, as a public meeting is for the public, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes, just final comment on this. I think it's important for us to keep the objective of each meeting as the objective of that meeting. Otherwise, we start to gray lines because what's to stop us next time from having legislation that we are voting on at the public hearing or, you know, working through new resolutions? The purpose of the public hearing, as recently defined by us with the passing of the council rules for 307, the public hearing is for three purposes. To discuss legislation for topics of unusually high importance to the citizens or when a public hearing is required by state, local, state or local law, like when we present the budget. And we should really keep the public hearings specifically for those items and not start to kind of mix agendas and blur the lines between public hearings, regular meetings, and work sessions.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion before we take a vote? All right, well, a vote to accept the agenda with the amendment that the two consensus items be included for the open to citizen comments as well. Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gill?
Pass.
Councilwoman Fareed?
This is passing the agenda with the amendment, right?
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Gill, can you clarify what you said? Did you say yes or pass?
I had said pass, but I'm just going to abstain.
Okay, no problem. Thank you so much. Okay, so we have five. This is pass.
All right, thank you. At this point, we open the floor to public comments on current legislation, including the consensus items on the agenda. Any public comments? You can raise your hand, your virtual hand, or you can unmute yourself and, and make yourself recognized, and I can call on you. Smallwood. Smallwood, you have five minutes. We can hear you if you are talking, so please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna start from the bottom and work up. Oh, as far as returning in person, I don't understand why. I think I'm hearing that you need a, a consensus to return in public, to have public meetings downstairs. It's, this is what this is about? And somebody else missed, because I'm, I'm not sure.
So that item was to take consensus from the council of returning to in-person meetings. Because I think as far as I've been on the council, the meetings have been virtual due to the pandemic. And so we will need a consensus for council members to come back into, into the council chambers.
Okay, I don't think you need a consensus to come back. I think we just need to come back because that is the requirement of the council is to have the open meetings downstairs in the council chamber. So I don't think a consensus is necessary. You just need to come back. As far as the gratis for former councilwoman Barbara Armstrong, the charter is clear, so you just need to go ahead and give her the, the gratis so it can move on because as I understand, the services is May 27.
Yes.
Okay. Now, only person is, is in reference to Resolution R. 35, 2020, 2022. My first question is, this literacy, financial literacy is being taught in, in middle school, elementary school, high school. So I don't understand why you want to pay someone to come and teach this when it's already been taught for free. I want to know that anybody reach out to Ms. Goson, who is the Board of Education, and talk to her about having this program coming to, to the city of Glen Arden for free. And I, other question I have is on, now under the, on line 19 on page two, the question is, where's the grant money coming from? Is the grant money coming from my taxpaying dollar? Is the grant money coming from the ARPA money? If the ARPA money is, is used, then after all the ARPA money is gone, is this program going to be dissolved? And did you reach out to another organization? Can somebody answer those questions from?
So let me start with your last questions first, Ms. Smallwood. Thank you for those questions. As it relates to the grant that is from ARPA funds, and the grant will only last through the period that's specified in the resolution. So once, whichever comes first, the grant period end date or the, the max is reached on the cap, whichever comes first is when the program will end. So it, it won't be a continued program like it is, like the county has a program. It won't be something that we do every year.
Okay, so what I'm, what I'm hearing from you, so this, this program you are having is to give somebody a job. Is this what I'm hearing?
No, I'm not sure why you would be reading it that way. What, what's making you think that?
Reason why I read it this way is because you're saying, once the ARPA grant money is used up, then the program will end. So that means if the program end, the person who's running the program will no longer have a job. But why are we going to pay somebody for, for this when it's already been implemented in the school system? And you could talk to Ms. Goson, who is in charge of the Board of Education in the state of Prince George's County, and she can have them come to the school, come to Glen Arden, and set up a program where it wouldn't cost the city any money.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the stormwater management grant. So as it relates to the financial literacy program, it's not just targeted towards those who are in school age. It's also for seniors who will, would need assistance, young adults, adults. So it's really a supplementary to what is being offered in schools. And also, not everyone attends public schools. There are, are children who are homeschooled. There are children who attend private schools. So that offering is not really available to everyone. But this is just really a way for us to commit to the citizens and that, you know, financial literacy is important to us, is important to the stability and longevity of our city. And so that, it's not, that's not a grant program. That's just a program. We can look at different offerings in the, in the resolution. It says, you know, such as, so it's not saying that we need to use Ms. Boone's services. We can look into other options as well. It's just more so saying that we want to have a demonstrated commitment to the citizens and, and helping improve their financial literacy.
Okay, well, let's go up here to line 16. You're saying that the citizens have to complete a successful workshop in order, and maybe I might be reading this wrong. You're saying the citizen had to complete the workshop in order to get this money.
Right, so that's if we have grant, like other grant programs, that would be offering some sort of financial assistance. So if we were going to do a grant program to help people catch up on their bills or something like that. And I got the idea because when I was younger, I was 24, I bought my first apartment, and I bought it through a program which was sponsored by a financial literacy initiative. And as part of that program, in getting my mortgage at, you know, only having to put 5% down and getting it at a favorable rate, I went through that program. I learned about credit scores and what I needed to do to manage my credit and how I could manage my finances being a first-time home buyer. And I found that to be tremendously helpful for me in getting that education as I got older and bought additional properties and just became more savvy financially. So that's where that idea is coming from. If people are looking for financial assistance, that would be a great opportunity to educate them a bit more on financial literacy.
I don't agree with you on, on this, and I hope that I will go back to the drawing board and revisit this.
Well, I welcome your suggestions, Ms. Smallwood, on how we could achieve the objective of increasing financial literacy in our city to make sure that, you know, our children can afford to own the homes in this community so they don't have to move away. And so how we can make sure that people who have homes can continue to have those homes. I welcome your suggestions.
Is that all, Council? I'm sorry, Ms. Smallwood, are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, are there any other citizens' comments? All right. What's next? Thank you. Ms. Wilson, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, so with that being said, what amount of money will be directed toward this literacy program? Financial literacy program? Because I don't see where there's a dollar now in there.
Yeah, because there may not be a dollar amount. I've attached Ms. Ty Boone's prospectus so we could look through that and see if that was an option we wanted to do and the cost for those workshops would be, are in there. The other options, you know, we could partner with community partners such as Ms. Smallwood outlined. They don't necessarily need to cost anything. The point is that we would bring financial literacy programs to the city. I'm certain that there are professionals in the city who are well-versed in this area who wouldn't mind coming and doing workshops as well. So the, the point here is not to say that we have to spend money on anyone. I think even Councilwoman Jones pointed out that there's a junior literacy program. We could look to partner with them as well. This is just an expression that the council will seek to bring financial literacy workshops or programs to the city as a benefit to the citizens.
Okay, I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I guess, so, so, okay, so right now, you're trying to establish the fact that you want to bring that lit of financial literacy into the city. But at what point do you have, if there, if it requires money? Because you say whatever funding or grants or whatever that would be given to individuals would come from the ARPA money. So how do you, at what time do you determine what funds will come from that? Or you're planning on, trying to use that bucket up?
So that was my misunderstanding of what Ms. Smallwood was asking at first. I thought she was asking about the stormwater management grant program. That's why I said it would come from the ARPA funds. So I'm not necessarily saying that any monies would be spent from the ARPA funds. We do have an upcoming budget season, so we can put money in the budget for that if it's necessary. But ARPA funds could be used for this as well. And how we would pay for it is the same way we do any other spending in the city. When we get those contracts and we get the, you know, send out the proposals and get solicit, solicit requests back from them, then we would choose who we want to work with and we would pass a resolution to pay the amount. If it's more than, I think $6,000 is the threshold. So we're circumventing any processes. Again, the point of this legislation is just to express the will of the council that we will take financial literacy seriously and seek to bring services to the city that will benefit our citizens and murder more.
So this, I'm sorry, so this attachment, Zoe and Zander's, this is not necessarily who you. uh, this is not necessarily who you'll be using?
Right. Right, that's an example, right.
Okay, so what was the purpose of attaching this particular one to the, to the resolution?
So, um, in the section where it talks about, um, Zoe and Zander and bringing the services in, where we say these are services such as, so that we could get an understanding, the citizens could get an understanding of what types of programming we would be looking to bring in. We don't have to work with Zoe and Zander's, but just as an example, you know, we could do workshops over a course of time. There's virtual workshops that can be done, just trying to put some context around the type of programming we could bring to the city.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I do have another comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Um, when I, when I first read this, I thought that, um, R thirty-four twenty-two, a resolution to establish a charter review process. And on the second page, we can go down to, um, number thirteen, that's line thirty-three. And we're talking here about Karen P. Rough, who is a, a esquire of Levane Rough LLC. So this is, is this the person who you're, who you're definitely going to be using for that?
So she, um, was a recommendation of our attorney, Ken Kopinski, to work with. If there are, um, other attorneys that, um, council members or even citizens still have the expertise to assist with that, happy to consider those folks as well.
Okay, so, uh, Ms. Levane Rough LLC is, um, she would, she would be overall the attorney in the event that Ms. Karen P. Rough is not available?
No.
Okay, because I, I'm inquiring, because I have issue, I take issue with, uh, Levane Rough.
With the firm or with Ms. Levane?
With Ms., with, I'm sorry, I can't say it. With, with Levane, because I don't think that she, um, she was, um, I don't know the adjective that I want to use, because I don't want to, I don't think she was good for the city, I'll put it like that.
I understand. I, I've never spoken to Ms. Levane, I've never had any interaction with her. Um, my discussion has only ever been with Ms. Rough, and even when Mr. Kopinski, um, suggested a, an attorney, he, he never mentioned Ms. Levane.
Okay, well.
And I did, sorry, I did also, um, confirm with Ms. Rough that, you know, that she would be the person working on it. Um, after I think Councilman Herring expressed some concern, um, during the last meeting, and she would only, she would be the only person working with us on this.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm very concerned with, with, um, Ms. Levane. So, um, I, I hope that, uh, that the council will not, uh, they'll figure something out so that you're not dealing with Ms. Levane.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
You're welcome.
Ma'am Cross, are you speaking? That's, I'm sorry, Councilman Free, did you have something?
Yes, I just want to ask, um, if the council clerk could bring up the sections of the, um, resolutions that are being commented on, so for the benefit of other citizens.
Yes, ma'am, can you leave me a sec?
Well, we'll go for, uh, Madam Clerk, because I think we're past those. But if someone else brings up, um, references something, then we can pull it up and show it. All right. And Cross, if you want to comment as a citizen?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So I've just re, reading over R thirty-seven twenty-two, brought forth by Councilwoman Jones. Uh, we go to, this is referencing the Good Companies Incorporated, three month provision for trash recycling and bulk item pickup. Uh, on the back page, second page, line six, seven, you've delegated this to the city manager to enter into a contract on behalf of the city. And I recall Councilman Herring made the comment on the last meeting that that should read, you know, the mayor enters into the contract. The city manager does have the ability to, and is, is supposed to manage and oversee that all of the, you know, fiduciary duties are taken care of as far as execution and, um, making sure that we get a proper reporting, uh, on the, the work that's done. But that six, seven needs to be added, and I believe that's correct. That was from, uh, Councilman Herring's comments last meeting. Thank you.
If it is the pleasure of the council to have the mayor's, uh, uh, because it, uh, the mayor cannot enter into any contracts unless it is, uh, from what I understand, unless it is, uh, the pleasure of the council. So if it is the pleasure of the council to do so, then that will be changed.
Ma'am Clerk, you can stop sharing now. Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Okay. With that, we would go to the two consensus items. Consensus to, um, um, to give gratis to, um, Ms. Armstrong. So with that, I'm sorry, and, and with that, there's, um, discrepancy in the, the rules and regulations. It does not say, it, it gives gratis to the gold room. It doesn't necessarily say the, you know, doubt, anything about the, uh, apparently the, the down payment on the use of the kitchen, which there is a fee for. That, uh, there'll still be a charge, a deposit and a fee to use additional services, but the gold room itself is gratis. So just wanted to make council members aware of that so that they're, we're all on the same page. And if that needed to change, then that needs to come through, um, uh, the rules and regulations, verging in there to clearly state that in there. But as of now, those things are a charge. So with that, to want to take consensus on, uh, providing gratis to former Councilwoman Armstrong.
Mr. President, before we do that, I, I do have a comment I'd like to make on this.
Yes, Councilman Herring.
Okay. Um, first of all, actually, we really should be taking a vote, because the charter says that we can vote in a public meeting, this is a public meeting. Um, but again, this really bothers me when y'all start splitting hairs. I don't understand how somebody can come into this city and start splitting hairs to that level. Use of the gold room is use of the gold room, that includes the kitchen too, for warming. That is not an additional charge. The use of the gold room is the use of the gold room, the, the kitchen is part of the gold room. The gold room includes the kitchen, chairs, tables, and, um, the, the kitchen. So I don't understand why we're going to sit here and make somebody pay sixty dollars for warming for an event that we're giving them gratis, gratis for. That makes absolutely no sense. You might as well pay, charge them for our worth of, uh, this, this, this nickel and dime of people is driving me completely crazy. People are grieving, people are going through things, and this is a former council member. We're going to sit there and beat them over the head for sixty dollars? For a gratis, for a event that should be gratis anyway? This is, that's absolutely ridiculous. It's, it's really disgraceful, it really is. It's really getting me frustrated that somebody's going to come in and nickel and dime everybody that walks through that door. Yet haven't bought in that one three thousand dollar contract yet. You know, so I think it's ridiculous to sit there and say somebody got to pay for anything when they're getting gratis in that gold. The gold room is gratis, the, the kitchen belongs to the gold room. That's get gratis also. So I'm just saying that, I don't, no, I do not agree with, no charging, the, that, that family sixty dollars for use of that kitchen. And if that's the, the road we're going to take with nickel and dime and everybody for everything that's in there, that's, I think we really need to look at ourselves and look at what we're trying to really do here when it comes down to people and being compassionate with people. We're talking about a former council member that served on our council for eight years. And we're going to sit there and nickel and dime him for sixty dollars for the, for the gold room. The gold room, the kitchen, all of that's part of the gold room, the lobby, all of that's part of the gold.
So, I'm sorry, you done, Councilman Herring?
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
All right, so just wanted clarification before I get to Ms. Jones, um, that, uh, Ms. Robinson is, is not trying to nickel and dime anyone. Actually, I just stated that wrong. She came to the council for clarity on whether we should or not. Uh, and I'll lean towards, well, she cannot violate the rules and regulations as we pointed out before, or it's, there's a fine. Uh, and so she asks, uh, whether, since it's not clearly stated in the rules and regulations, and these are added services in just the realm of event spaces and, uh, planning, uh, that what do we want to do with that? Uh, and so I just want to put that point of clarification there that Mrs. Robinson nor the city manager, uh, wanted to necessarily charge the person. They did not know what to do because it's not currently in the rules and regulations, and thus, there, you know, there's no role to take. Uh, because in, in the, in the regular course of business, I believe, uh, that those would be add-ons. But I just wanted to make a clarification, Ms. Jones, Councilwoman Jones.
Yeah, because, uh, like I said, if we look at the resolution, R one twenty, twenty-twelve, which I have here, it says that for a, a repass, they require a deposit of fifty dollars. And then it says in the resolution, uh, industrial kitchen use is another sixty dollars. So, um, until we get those things, uh, taken care of, I don't believe that anyone is trying to nickel and dime, uh, any citizen or any person that wants to use the gold room. We're only going by what's written in the resolution as, uh, what was, um, the pleasure of the council at that time. So, um, I, I, I just, no, we're not trying to do that at all.
Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Free.
Sorry, I was trying to come off mute. Um, I, I just didn't agree with, um, Councilman Herring on this in the sense that this is gratis, it's gratis. Um, I, I just would also add that I, I feel like we get into a lot of form over function. If we spent our time on putting forth resolutions to address the places in the, the gold room rules that don't quite make sense, like if it's gratis, I don't see why it also has, or rather, if it, um, falls under the umbrella of what's allowed per gratis, why do we even have to bring it forward to be discussing this? Um, it seems like we're, we're not being efficient with our time. And if we wanted to spend our time on something, we could do that on resolutions that actually maybe take that line out of the gold room rules that say it still has to be approved by the council, even if it, you know, they are former council members. It's just, it just seems to be a waste of time, um, that we're doing that. And I feel like we're doing that in a lot of areas as it relates to the use of spaces in the building. Like, let's just say how we expect the spaces to be you, used, and move forward from that instead of, it seems like lately every meeting we're talking about whether we can use nutrition center or what part of the gold room can be used, or this or that. And it's just, it seems silly to me. We could have easily put forth resolutions already to say what the uses of those spaces are for, um, as the will of the council in twenty-twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Free. I also wanted to, to point out that our, Ms. Robinson and the city manager is at an unfair disadvantage. They've been given one thing, then given another thing, the rules and regulations aren't clear. And I think we do have to be consistent, are we going to obey the rules and regulations or not? Uh, and it's unfair to them, uh, to keep on changing the standard. Uh, if it's in the rules and regulations that there is a deposit and that there's a sixty dollar charge for currently, for, um, for the kitchen, even if they're gratis, then those rules and regulations have to be upheld. Even if personally, I would agree that if it's gratis, it's gratis, but I would lean more towards Ms. Robinson and how, and this, Ms. Barbara, as they structure, um, just the rules and regulations of the, um, the gold room, and then it'll be in the will of the council whether we include it or not. But at this point, if it is in the rules and regulations that they, that Ms. Armstrong gets the room for free, and that there's a, um, a, a deposit and a sixty dollar charge for the, for the room, then as a, if those are the rules as, as they currently state, then the gold room staff have to abide by those.
Mr. Herring? Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
It says that former council members can get the gold room for gratis. That means they can get the gold room for free. When you get it for free, that means there's no deposit, there's no payment for the kitchen. You get all the services that are available to you in the gold room for free. I'm not understanding why, what, what is there so hard to understand about this? We can live the word gratis, it's free. So everything that's involved with renting that room is free, because we're giving it to the person for free, because the rules and regulations says that this person is entitled to it for free for a repass. And that's what I'm saying, the, the, the splitting hairs, they're making up stuff that isn't even there. I mean, you're, you're making something, and I agree with, uh, uh, Councilwoman Free. It's like, God, the finest stuff out here, they're throwing stuff out here that just makes absolutely no sense to anybody, anybody that's going to read the rules and regulations and see what they say, because it does not say anything in there that is gratis, but you got to pay. It doesn't say that in there. It says they get the gold room for gratis, and that is, and if, if the gold room wasn't there, the kitchen wouldn't be there. So they get the kitchen, they get the gold room, and all other services that come along with it for free. That's what gratis use of the gold room is. I mean, this, this is absolutely absurd. And I'm just like, it's, again, I, I think it's nickel and dime, because I'm like, we shouldn't even be having this long drawn out conversation. The rule says that they can get it for free. There should not be no, 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 but, but the kitchen is fifty, or, or the kitchen is sixty, and they got to put down a fifty dollar deposit. No, that's not, that's not the premise of, of, of giving gratis. Giving gratis is to give somebody a, a, the, giving them something for free because you want to do that as a, as a nice gesture towards them. So this, this, throwing fees in here, and that's why I'm saying you're nickel and dime it, because you, 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 they're throwing stuff out there that's not there, you know? And I'm just saying, it's, it's not there, it's not in the rules and regulations, it says gratis, that's it. Gratis use of the gold room, so.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilwoman Ferguson?
With all that said, can we please take the vote or consensus, whichever one we have required to do? Because this is ridiculous.
Okay, just, what, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. Does it clearly say in the, the, the resolution that for gratis, that those two things are included?
It says, uh, guidelines for gold room gratis, and then number three, former or, or current city elected officials and their immediate family, in parentheses, spouse, parents, children, one time per year for a repass or for an elected official to hold a meeting of public interest.
And, and it doesn't say anything about the fees?
It doesn't say anything about any fees. It says under the, the first line, uh, use of the gold room at no charge may be granted to the following persons or organizations. And then it gives three criterias, nonprofit is number one, five oh one Cs, uh, one time, uh, for fundraising or award ceremonies, then, uh, nonprofit, five, five-ten, uh, C threes, and then it lists the, uh, organizations, which is the First Baptist Church of Glen Arden, Midnight Basketball, Glen Arden Schools, the track team, the Boys and Girls Club, Civic Association, and the Girl Scouts of Glen Arden. And I, and, and, uh, and the other thing is, it isn't, um, I'm thinking, um, Ms. Robinson and, and the, uh, city manager are in the process of developing and restructuring the rules. So, I mean, until they, it's been submitted to the council to look at, uh, this is what, this is what we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And, and just to reiterate, you know, uh, you know, I hear your passion, uh, Mr. Herring. Um, and again, this was just a question to the council. It wasn't, you know, you know, Ms. Robinson or Ms., or the city manager tried to nickel about anyone. It was just that there has been unclarity in, as it relates to rules and regulations, because things aren't clearly defined in there. Um, and so it was. And so it was just a question. It wasn't a one way or the other. So we'll do a consensus to have gratis, gratis meaning gratis for everything, free, everything for former Councilwoman Armstrong. Right? Council Clerk?
All right, Councilwoman Jones?
I have no issue with, with granting gratis for the complete, the gold room, the kitchen, and any deposits that are required for former Councilwoman Barbara Armstrong.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Guillaume? Thank you. Councilwoman Farid?
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, everything free.
President Curtis?
Yes.
We have, the consensus is that the gold room will, and all uses of the gold room functions will be at gratis.
Thank you. All right, and last consensus is return to in-person meetings. You know, even before this council started, meetings were virtual. But now numbers getting low, most of America's back to work, and most municipalities are doing either hybrid or in-person. I've gotten few comments from citizens about the need to be in person, the desire for us to be in person. So, and I know that we have a very that we have budget meetings coming up. And so this is a consensus to return in person with the appropriate COVID measures in place, whether it be masks or anything. We understand, there probably still be some rules around, around that. But any discussion on that before we vote on returning to in-person?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Herring?
So when are we talking about returning? Are we talking about returning immediately? Are we talking about returning in a new session in September?
It'll be to return in with next month's meetings. With the, with the caveat that I believe work sessions were never, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, work sessions weren't typically performed in the council chambers. So those are likely continued to be virtual with the public hearing and the regular meetings being in council chambers. But i- if it's the will of the council, because I know that some issues were raised about the readiness of the room to broadcast council meetings. And so if it's the will of the council, we can start in a new session in September, or we can start in June. It, you know, it's up to council to decide that.
Also, will virtual also be included for the in-person also?
I believe so. It'll involve all of us bringing our computers and most of us putting it on mute so that people can still see us online. But we can work it out if we, we would need to. There's a will, there's a way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments in the council as it relates to returning in person for due? Or new session? Councilwoman Jones?
So what measures are we going to put in place for not only masking, but even when I still go to the bank, they still have up the petition to, for to keep them safe? Not only do they have masks on, but they still have the petitions up, the Plexiglas petitions. Will we, will we be improving the council chambers for those types of things? Is it going to be deep cleaned before we go into the council chambers? Because we, the, the council has not been in the chamber since, oh, for two years now. But as far as, it's just been, the room has just been shut down, like there's no use of it at all.
So it sounds like it makes more sense to possibly come back in the next session if that's going to be a hurdle for us coming back.
They have it deep cleaned, or if we're, are we going to decide to put up, like I said, the petitions, you know, between each other to keep, you know, other council members safe? Because it's, even with the seating at the dais, it's not six feet apart. We're right next to one another. And then looking at some of the, like the one we saw at the county, the county went in and did a whole renovation of that area, not only to keep the citizens safe at six feet apart with the chairs, but to keep each council member a distance from one another.
And that's, sounds like money that we'll also have to vote on, so it looks like we wouldn't be able to make it back anyway. It could have just depended on, for, I know that the partitions Plexiglas are, that's expensive. That's going to be at least ten thousand dollars. Well, I take that back, I'm sorry, not going to put a price out on it, but they are expensive. Any other discussion? To make a consensus to return to in-person meetings? I'm just going to say at the new session, we'll return in September to give council time for it to be deep cleaned. Council, Councilwoman Ferguson?
I'm not sure if we, do we have, you're saying bring our laptops. Do we have the electrical capacity for all of the laptops to be put there? Down there, I mean, that was probably something else that may and remodeling the whole thing that would probably have to be considered like it was at the county office.
I'm not saying about that answer to the question. As I've never been in the council chambers. But I do think that there should be some decision to move forward in that regard because things are better. And for some, in-person is, is better for our citizens. I agree with that. But I also agree with protecting council members and citizens. So if there is any opposition, then I move that we take a census to return to in-person meetings at the start of a new session after the potential break, because we haven't, you know, voted on that. But that would look to be July, August, September. So that citizens can have a firm understanding that we are coming back. So Madam Clerk, the consensus to return to in-person meetings with the start of a new session in September.
Councilwoman Jones?
Wow, I am going to say this, and I'm not a fear monger, and I'm not going to go, don't go through. But I did read earlier on yesterday and today where Dr. Fauci is pronouncing the fact that this wave of COVID is coming up is going to affect African Americans worse than than, are going to affect African Americans greater than it did anyone else. So yeah, things right now are pretty good, and some people are still wearing masks. I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume? Councilwoman Farid?
Abstain.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson?
I would just like to say, I went to my doctor yesterday, and she actually said that the numbers are, because of the relaxation of everything, the numbers are going up, upsetting. She said she's overwhelmed with people coming back. So at that point, I'm coming to her office because the numbers are going back up. So I would abstain.
President Curtis?
I would say that there are certain, you know, guidelines that we can put in place as, you know, you know, some churches has, have required since church members to register if they're coming to, if they're coming to service, to be vaccinated, to wear a mask, to social distance. And then if, you know, space is completely filled with socialists, then we cut off entrance due to no, not having enough room. I just think that at some point that we do have to return and that we can return safely, responsibly. And so with that, my vote will be yes. I believe Councilwoman Guillaume is back on now.
Yes. Council, Guillaume, your consensus on returning back to in-person sessions starting in September? Abstain, okay. We have two yes, four abstain. This is Phil.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Jones, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I do. I, this one, I mean, this is from my observation. I don't know how anybody else would, how anybody else's, what their take is. But I just think that that whole, after looking, after seeing the, the council chambers improvements that were done in the county to ensure the safety of people. I just think that that whole council chambers and that, including that, just that whole room all the way around, including the bathrooms, needs to be renovated so that we can, I mean, the space, there's nothing been done to the space in years, you know? I mean, if you, I would, I would ask all of the council, if you get an opportunity to go over to, the county office building is right there on McCormick, off of McCormick Drive, and just go and look at their chambers to see what they've done. We might not have to do it on that scale, but something close to that scale. That whole room downstairs needs to be, be gutted to include the nutrition center. Since the nutrition center may not, well, at this juncture, it's not going to be used as a, as a county nutrition center again. So that space will be city space. But it just, that whole area down, even the bathrooms down there, need, I mean, it's somewhat at the point of ADA compliant, but that, the whole space, it just needs to be renovated. Thank you.
Councilwoman Farid, final comment?
Yeah, I would just ask that when we bring this back up again, we bring it up with a plan. Every time we discuss this, there are so many conditionals, like if we do this or if we do that, we just need to say we're going to do these things and this is what we're going to do to come back. And I also think we should have flexibility because we're going to be in waves with this COVID thing. So we can't just be rigid and say we're going to be in person when we might need to sometimes pull back in order to protect the citizens as well as protect the council. Keeping in mind that we are the legislators for the city, and if all of us were to get sick, that could be a problem.
Thank you. All right, with that, the time is eight oh six. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.